Good evening and welcome to the September 13th work session and special meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chad Brown and I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as a member from the Riverbend Township. I would like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For our television audits and live streaming audits, I would like to present your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my far right.
Alan Frayley, Chair of Township.
Ronnie Worley, South Point Township.
Good evening, Bob Hovis, Crowder's Mountain Township.
Good evening, Tom Keiger, Gastonia Township.
And I think Kim Johnson has joined us? We'll wait and see. But anyway, thank you, and as you all know, Sunday marked the 21st anniversary of the September 11th, 2001 terror attacks on our country. A special reading of the proclamation commemorating this event was aired over the weekend for our government access channel and will be adopted on the September 27th meeting. Because of the sacrifices of so many on that fateful day, September 11th should never be just another day. In the hearts and minds of the people of the United States, please rise and join me and the board members for a moment of silence in remembrance of all those who perished, and then we will go into the invocation by Ms. Pearl Burris Floyd and the pledge of allegiance
Please pray with me. Dear heavenly Father, Maker of heaven and earth, and all that is good, and all that is in this world, we thank you for being our shield and our sword. We ask that you would be in this meeting tonight to guide the decisions of this commission, illuminate their minds, and allow them to hold fast to the truth, that you might be glorified. Father, we pray for our country. When things seem to be turned upside down, we know that we can go to the rock that is higher than ourselves. We ask that you would bless all the leaders in our country, local, state, and national. Father, help each citizen hold fast to the truth, be willing to listen to each other, and follow the golden rule by treating each other the way we would like to be treated. Father, we pray and continue to pray for the survivors of the families that were so tragically touched during 9/11. Let us never forget, and always allow us to be on watch for evil wherever it exists, to speak up against it, to stand against it, and to always remember our great country and those who fought so valiantly overseas as well at stateside, to do those things that would be pleasing in your sight. We thank you for this county, and we thank you for the county employees, many of whom have given many decades of their life in service to our community. So Father, we thank you, and we ask these blessings in your name. Amen.
Please join me in prayers. I pray allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. The first thing on the agenda tonight is proclamations, awards, and I've asked Ms. Melinda Silvers from Social Services to please join me to proclaim and recognize September 18th through the 24th, 2022 as National Adult Daycare Service Week in Gaston County. Whereas since 1983, under former President Ronald Reagan, leadership adult day services program have been recognized and celebrated through a National Adult Day Services Week. And whereas Gaston County Adult Day Services provide professional and compassionate services for adults, enabling functionality, cognitive, impaired adults to receive daytime care in a safe supervised environment. Whereas adult day services programs provide an alternate placement for long-term facilities, allowing many participants to age in place. And whereas adult day service programs offer participants the opportunity, socialize, enjoy peers, participate in a variety of activities designed to keep adults engaged. And whereas these programs provide a much-needed assistance to respite for caregivers, and in many cases allow caregivers to remain employed. And whereas bringing more public awareness to the importance of adult day services through educational outreach and positive experience of participants and families continues to expand the understanding of the critical role of these services providing care in our adult community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners recognizes the week of September 18th through 24th, 2022 as National Adult Day Services Week, and celebrates adult day services in Gaston County and across the nation, urges our citizens to honor and celebrate this week, this to be adopted on the 27th day of September. Melinda, thank you.
Thank you.
If you'd like to say a few words.
Sure, sure. So I want you to kind of imagine yourself as you become old and become a senior citizen. You're isolated at home due to dementia, maybe you've had a stroke which has caused physical limitations, maybe you have anxiety, depression that's kept you isolated at home, you've lost the ability to drive due to maybe loss of eyesight, but then you find out about a program like we offer, adult daycare. You enroll in a program that's going to offer you to have something to look forward to, to make friends, to socialize, to get out of the house, to stimulate, to be stimulated physically and socially cognitively that may help program, slow down the progression of your dementia or your health-related issues. At the adult daycare, we offer activities throughout the day that helps, which offers life enrichment opportunities for the seniors that come. I say we put life in their years. I say that we are the country club of Gaston County for the senior citizens, and it's a really good place to be. And I tell the seniors that once you stop dancing is when you grow old. So we have a really good time at the adult daycare, and it's a great program that we offer for the citizens of Gaston County. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm taking Shag Blessings tomorrow night.
Thank you, Commissioner Keiger. The next proclamation is a proclamation to proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2022 as Constitutional Week. I will now ask our Assistant County Manager, Mr. Karen Wyker, to please come and accept on behalf of the Constitutional Week. Thank you, ma'am. Whereas September 17th, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas the fitting and proper to accord official recognition of this magnificent document and its memorable anniversaries, and to the patriotic celebrations which we commemorate these occasions. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuance of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved by the virtue of the authority vested in the Gaston County Board of Commissioners, and the Board proclaims the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2022 as Constitution Week. It urges the citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties, remembering that the lost rights may never be regained, this to be adopted on the 27th day of September 2022. Thank you, ma'am, for accepting this on our behalf.
I would ask Interim Tax Director Tar Bush and Tax Office staff that would like to join us here at the podium. Got a lot of folks here after hours, so thank y'all for being here. When you could be somewhere else, be home or having dinner, but you're here, so thank you for that. This is accommodation to commend the Gaston County Tax Office for earning the IAAO Certificate of Excellence in Assessment Administration Award. Whereas Ms. Tar Bush is the Interim Director of Tax Office for Gaston County. Whereas the International Association of Assessing Officers offers assessing jurisdiction the opportunity to obtain the Certificate of Excellence in Assessment Administration. The CEAA is a rigorous and challenging 13-chapter self-evaluation of assessment practices that covers all aspects of a jurisdiction. Whereas the IAAO and the CEAA is intended for jurisdictions that have developed superior assessment practices for all aspects of their operations. After eight months of work, the Gaston County Tax Office applied, completed, and submitted their 13-chapter self-evaluation for grading. Whereas during the 2022 IAAG Conference in Boston, Massachusetts, the Gaston County Tax Office was awarded the prestigious Certificate of Excellence in Assessment Administration. The purpose of the IAAO, CEAA, is to recognize governmental units utilizing best appraisal and assessment practices throughout their offices, including a strong emphasis on teamwork, accomplishments, and a high level of satisfaction among peers, staff, and constituents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners congratulates the Gaston County Tax Office upon being awarded the IAAO Certificate of Excellence in Assessment Administration, and this will be adopted at our 27th September meeting later this month.
Chelsea, if you'd like to say a few words, and I present you, and I thank you all for your work in the board, and appreciate you, and know you got a challenging upcoming year too.
Thank you all. I would just like to thank our staff that spent eight long months, sometimes after hours. They did this volunteering, they were not voluntold, and we were successful. This was a lot of hard work, and it sets Gaston County apart. We are one of seven counties in North Carolina to achieve this award out of the 100 counties in Gaston County, and we, I mean, in North Carolina. So thank you to all of our staff that is here and the staff that couldn't make it tonight, and thank you.
Before you leave, I wanted to tell everybody in attendance, and if you'll pass this along, and Ronnie alluded to, the upcoming year will be very difficult. I want you all to know, and that staff, we'll be here behind you 100% during this, so if you need something, please let us know what it is, we can do to help.
And we truly appreciate that.
And thank you so much for what you guys do.
Thank you. Thank you all.
If Reverend Dr. Pearl Burris Floyd would please join me here at the podium for this Whereas Hispanic Heritage, oh, did you have someone else here? I'm sorry, excuse me, I didn't realize others were here. Please, join us, or anyone else who'd like to join us. All these nice people behind me. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is the opportunity to celebrate the culture, history, and contributions of Hispanic American citizens, and highlights their countless achievements and contributions. And whereas the observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Baines Johnson, and was observed annually until 1988, when it was expanded by President Ronald Reagan to a period of September the 15th through October the 15th, and became National Hispanic Heritage Month, and has been celebrated annually since then. And whereas more than 60 million Americans of Hispanic origin today contribute to our national diversity, enriching the quality of American life with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their communities, while adding to their own distinct and dynamic perceptives to the story of our country. And whereas this observance affords special opportunities to become more knowledgeable about Hispanic culture, and to honor the many Hispanic Americans who represent a significant and fast-growing demographic of Gaston County. We honor the invaluable ways these citizens contribute to our country and our county. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the month beginning September the 15th and ending October the 15th, 2022 as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourage all citizens to join us in celebrating the great contributions of Hispanic Americans to our country, our state, our nation, and our county, this to be adopted the 27th day of September 2022.
On behalf of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Department and the Multicultural Affairs Committee, we thank you Commissioners. This is the second year that you have done this, and we are so thrilled. And I have some important people behind me who have been doing tremendous work in the community. I'm going to relinquish the mic to them, let them introduce themselves, and tell you what they've been working on, and we have a few pictures at the end of their conversation with you. Thank you so much.
Hello, good evening. Thank you so much for acknowledging Hispanic Heritage Month. We would love to invite everyone to our event, Walk and Roll Together. It is going to be in downtown Gastonia. It's going to be a community walk, just kicking off Hispanic Heritage Month, so September 17th at 10 o'clock in the morning. We hope to see each and every one of you there.
Thank you so much for the recognition. It has been an amazing, an amazing opportunity for us to represent our community in here, so thank you for that. What you see in the screen is the invitation, come and celebrate with us. It's huge, and it's the first time that we do something this big in the downtown Gastonia, so we hope for you guys to walk with us that day.
They're very, very modest. I wanted them to give their names, but they're running back to their seats. But we are happy to have with us Vivianette Ortiz, and she is with the North Carolina Disabilities Group. And so she has been here in Gaston County, working on the events that are upcoming, and we're just excited about the attention that we are giving to our brothers and sisters of Hispanic and Latin origin. So we're just excited about what we've been able to do, and no one does it by themselves. So I'm so pleased that they were here tonight, there were a couple of others, but they weren't able to be here because of illness. But I think we were represented well, and Deanna Wilmot is our representative from the Health Department, and so she takes care of all of our Latino and Hispanic concerns. And this year, we've made great strides, and to partner with them and to have our names down on the recognition page as being a sponsor. So we are working through helping each other, love one another, and just develop a sense of belonging. I thank you again.
Ms. Pearl?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I want to ask a favor, if Deanna doesn't mind. I would like to send our group over to do a kind of a quick interview of what you guys are doing for the 17th, to put on the channel in Spanish, so that way they can, the Spanish-speaking people can understand that in our community. If you don't mind, I'll get with the manager to get with Todd and him to get a time that's right for you to be able to put that on there. I know it's such a short little timeframe, but I'd like to have it this week if possible, just to introduce what's going on, and also I'd like to make this a monthly type of thing, if you don't mind doing something like that, to work with that. Juan has sent me an email while we were here, and we think the world of you guys, and if there's ever anything we can do, we may not be able to help speak the languages as fluent, but we want to make sure we get our message out to the Spanish-speaking community. So if there's anything we can ever do, please let Ms. Pearl know, and we'll make sure we get it forwarded to you, but thank you. It was great pleasure for the Gaston County Board of Commissioners to honor citizens who have unselfishly given of their time, talent, skills, and energies in service as an appointee to one of our boards and commissions. This type of service is the foundation for citizen involvement in our Gaston County government, and is helping shape the future of our community. We gratefully acknowledge the work of the following individuals, and a certificate of appreciation has been forwarded to them. Patrick Kelly, Chair of Planning Board and Chair of Board of Adjustments. Tarkeisha Connor, Council on Aging Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. Barry Joy, Barry Wilson, Brian Wyneth, Corey Jones, David Toomey, Doug Mayberry, Jeffrey Hovis, Matt Knup, Scott Moore, and Ted Hendricks for the Fire Advisory Board. Kelvin Harris, Lee Isley, Stephanie Lowery, Betty Worthy for the Health and Human Services Board. Josie Braddy, Ray Rayner, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Joseph Ramy, Partners Behavioral Health. Scott Carter, Workforce Development Board. We do appreciate all our citizens who come out and are a part of anything that we do in those particulars. Our next item on the agenda is citizens' recognition. A portion of the Board's agenda is set aside for the purpose of allowing citizens the opportunity to offer comments, suggestions. This comment period is not intended to require the commission or staff to answer any questions or provide a response. Questions requiring response shall be answered as soon as possible through the county's manager's office. Citizens' recognition will be limited tonight to three minutes. As I call your name, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Murray, I'm relatively new to Gastonia, but not to the general area. We are at such a blessed time in our lives, and my life is in its third trimester. My prayers are not directed in the decades that we grew up in, my prayers are directed in the trimesters of formulation, how we were born in periods of three months. Well, I've lived my life in periods of 30 years, and I'm in the last trimester, because if I go over 90, hey, I'm going anyway. The point I'm trying to make is we have a community of children that are dying for our love. We gave them cell phones, we fed them. I don't know what education, who got where, or when, but we've got to come together, and I've had some great ideas. One of them is getting more connected with the ballpark, with Caraman. I see where we can bring our groups in by the district. One night we'll have your district, we'll have the players come out and meet you, and no phones. You can't bring a phone if you come. We've got to get back into this like we did when we were younger. We had police boys' clubs and girls' clubs, and places for the community to go. There's nobody here. I am from New York. There were tears in my eyes, sir, when you mentioned September 11th. I sat on top of a hill as a civil servant. I was a plumbing inspector for the town in North Hempstead, and I cried because down at the bottom of that hill across the bay was the towers and smoke. I'm here because Jesus told me to get up and do something. I go back to church. We have a prayer before our meeting, but I can't have a Bible in a school. We all know what we're facing, but an empty room is never, ever, ever going to change it. We've got to bring this room, this collection of representatives, to the community, to the ballpark. Now Mr. Bellamy, Mr. Bellamy, that's Brendan Bellamy, the owner of the Honey Hunters, just blew me away with his investment to this community. None of us, none of us want Mr. Bellamy to be more successful than Mr. Bellamy, and we have to help him achieve that. I was there the other day speaking with Veronica, one of his associates. I saw the plaque. My first job was at Shea Stadium and selling peanuts in 1970. And when National Coliseum opened, I noticed there wasn't a name on the plaque that had anything to do with the political aspect of the building being built. And I'm saying to myself, nothing's changed. Why isn't Brandon Bellamy's name on that wall? I know politics. Okay, let's get away from the politics. Let's do it as a communion, a communion, a community dedication for him to be the first tenant.
Just wrap it up. You're good, just wrap it up, you're good. Keep talking.
I gotta wrap it up. Yeah, well, judge told me not to want to talk, so I just quit.
Mr. Murray, before you leave, will you please state your address for the record, just so I need it for the record, please?
My address?
Yeah, your address.
Yeah, my name's Kevin Murray, I'm at 3191 River Ridge Drive, and that's in Gastonia, 28056.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, we'll be in touch.
All right. The next item on the agenda is presentations. Our next presentation will be by Mr. Neil Brennan, the Lake Wiley Marine Commission Annual Report in Idle Speed No-Wake Discussion. Mr. Brennan?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me see if I can figure out how to work this machine here. P5. F5.
Help coming behind you, Mr. Brennan.
He told me how to do this once, but I've got a short memory.
That's all right. Take your time.
Oh, escape. That was the first one. Thank you. Full screen? Right. Okay. Thank you. I'm trainable, but there you go. I'm Neil Brennan. I'm the Executive Director of the Lake Wiley Marine Commission. Our mission statement really hasn't changed at all. We're here to promote public policies and support regulations, key word and tricky phrase, for the preservation of Lake Wiley, its wildlife, and for the education and safety, another key word in our mission statement, of the citizens who use this beautiful natural resource. Going to talk about these areas tonight. Safety is at the top of the list, law enforcement and laws, the environment, sedimentation and education. With regard to safety, the danger buoys, as you may know, are done by the states. We may let them know if there's one out of place and then go fix it. But, any of the no-wake zones that are requested go through us. We'll forward the recommendation to the various state agencies after we do a little scoping of the area ourselves and make a recommendation. In South Carolina, they take care of the buoys themselves if they're approved. In North Carolina, we, by law, are required to place them and maintain them. Our life jacket program, donut, life jackets to the police, they may hang them out on one of the boards there at one of the boat ramps, or they may also carry them with them on the police boats, so that in case they come across somebody that doesn't have the right size for the youngster, they can give them one, so they don't have to go off the lake and find one. We have, from time to time, provided budget, funds for unbudgeted emergent needs. We've bought some dive gear in the past and sonar equipment and so on. And good news here, the FERC application, and I think I've been briefing you all about this for the last couple of years. We finally got this Federal Energy Regulatory Commission application for a boathouse for the northern end of the lake. The city of Belmont was deeded some land by the Belmont Rowing Club. They wanted to have a rowing dock there. We suggested it. Maybe it'd be a good idea if we had a police presence next to them. They thought that was a wonderful idea. We're going to have a two-slipper, one for the Gaston County Police Boat and one for the Belmont Fire Boat. The fire department's about a mile up the road. They bought a new truck. And when they found out, trying to hook their trailer up to the new truck, they found it stuck out the back end of the firehouse. So, they were real happy about getting a place to put their boat in the water and use right away if they needed it. That application now has been sent out to all the FERC holders. And that process is going to take several months for people to review the whole plan, make comments, come back, ask questions, so on and so forth. Once that all is done, then we can proceed with construction. Laws. South Carolina recently reconfirmed their idle speed law of 50 feet around any dock at all, or any marina, or any boat ramp. And they also implemented a new wake surfing regulation, which says thou shalt not wake surf within 200 feet of any dock, or marina, or so on and so forth. Now, North Carolina doesn't have an idle speed regulation on Lake Wiley. The regulation says thou shalt not proceed at greater than idle speed in way of any public dock. So, funny, if somebody wants to come zipping by my dock, they can do that. We don't think that's a good idea. And by the way, there is no wake surfing rule in North Carolina. Curiously, Lake Norman has a law that says thou shalt not go at greater than idle speed within 50 yards of any dock. So, it's kind of all over the map. But, what we would like to do is, for consistency's sake, is mimic what they passed in South Carolina and issue those regulations here, so that for training, for teaching people the rules and regulations of Lake Wiley, we're all speaking the same rules and the same rules apply. So, if you can see here, the wording in the yellow font is what was adopted in South Carolina. And it talks about 50 feet, no idle speed. It had to be 50 feet away from a moored ankle breast, a person in the water, private wharf, underline private. And then, the wording is in white is basically just restates what's in current law regarding public docks. And then, the next part has to do with the wake surfing. So, how do we go about this? I met with law enforcement, Captain Battle and Sergeant Knup of the Gaston County Police Department. And I said, "What do you think about this 50-yard rule for Lake Wiley, idle speed?" And they said, "You know, that's not practicable. We get too many narrow coves and waterways here that..." But, 50 feet would work. 50 feet is not unreasonable. That sounds like something we could support. I went to the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission and said, "Hey, can you guys issue these things? Can you issue these rules to mimic what's going on down here in South Carolina?" They said, "No, we can't. Our charter does not allow us to do that. We have to go and inspect every, every area that somebody wants a no-wake zone in." Really? Yeah. And I said, "What about this wake surfing? Nope, can't do that either. They have no authority to issue a broad brush stroke regulation like that." The legislation that set us up allows us to do that, us being the Lake Wiley Marine Commission. Now, there's a process that we have to go through if we were to enact these regulations. We have to have a public hearing. We have to announce that public hearing. We have to post any regulations that we would promulgate on Lake Wiley. We have to file those regulations with the Secretaries of State, both South and North Carolina. We have to file it with the clerks of the court. I mean, there's a process here that we've got to go through, along with the Executive Directors of the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, the guys who can't issue the rules, right? And in South Carolina, Wildlife and Marine Resources Department. And there's one more requirement, and that's a self-imposed requirement. And that's asking you all what you recommend. I am well aware of certain regulations that were issued by a different marine commission that got a little over their skis, as has been said, pun intended. And we don't want to do that. We want to proceed very cautiously and very methodically and get your input, hopefully your buy-in, because we think these regulations are reasonable and they make it consistent across the lake. So, I'll ask you, what do you recommend and how would you have us proceed? I proposed a draft resolution that was suggested by a very smart lady who's not here tonight. She said, "Why don't you use our draft resolution as a vehicle to get this before the board?" And I think you all have a copy of that. So, well, I'll let you think about that and we'll come back to it. There's another law that came into being here recently. It's called the No-Rise Certification. And the No-Rise Certification says, "Communities must prohibit the construction of docks in the floodway unless a hydraulic and hydrologic analyses are performed to show that the dock would not result..." I'm having to read this, because it's... "would not result in any increased flood levels during the occurrence of the base flood discharge, the 100-year flood." I mean, what that says is, you want to build a dock, you have to pay an engineer. The payment doesn't go to the county. It's not a tax. It has to go to a private concern to make sure that this dock is not going to cause the increase in flood levels. That Gaston County was cited for not doing this in their latest audit. So, they started doing it, because it's the federal law. Mecklenburg has an ordinance that waives this rule. I don't, the gen I talked to, they think that's probably not going to stand muster, pass muster when it comes time for their audit. And then, your county had no clue about this. But, they confirmed with the state down there and they said, "Yeah, it's a federal law. You've got to do it." My neighbor just had a dock put in. It cost him $10,000 to have these analyses done. I've got a dock builder in South Carolina and says, "I can't build a dock that would cause that problem." I wrote to him and I said, "Hey, how many docks would it take before it tripped the wire?" "Well, we don't know. We've got to do each one." I said, "Well, you know, is there a number?" "Well, we don't know. We've got to do each one." So, this is one of those laws that appears to be a do-gooder law that had consequences that maybe people didn't understand, didn't see. So, we're going to tilt at this windmill and see if we can get this changed, because it doesn't seem to be one of these reasonable laws. The environment, river sweeps coming up here in a couple of weeks. We partnered with Catawba River Keeper. You can see the stats there. Collected a lot of trash last year. Got another one coming up this year. About 450 volunteers on Lake Wiley, had 10 sites and got a whole bunch of trash. I think the lady who's riding that bike did not ride that bike to the event. It's what she pulled out of the river. Hydrola control, we've got some hydrola in, up near Belmont. And also, some alligator weed down in, let's see, Catawba Creek and the South Fork. Now, the alligator weed, we put carp in and that eats the stuff down. And we're also using some herbicides in spots this year. We contribute funds to help get, pay for that. The thrift business is taken on by the Catawba River Keeper folks. The thrifts die out in the winter. Duke Energy is working with Mississippi State University. Apparently, their school is about the same latitude as we are here. They're trying to figure out a way to make the thrifts more effective or stronger, or find another way to tackle this. Clean marina program, North Carolina's taking care of their own. We used to do it. We take care of the one in South Carolina, because nobody wants to volunteer for their program down there, because it costs too much money and they've got to send people off to get training and nobody's involved, so we're filling a void down there. We look at sewage handling and oil and hazards, gasoline, how they handle their gasoline, so on. If they meet all the criteria, then we order them with a flag and they can fly at their marina. Water quality, we get a report from Charlotte Stormwater Service every couple of months. They do the samples. And during the summer, we also partnered with the, again, Catawba River Keeper on their swim guide program. There's about 12 sites up and down Lake Wiley, about four of them up here in the northern stretches, a couple down in the middle of the stream, and several down at the south end. And they sample for E. coli and then post the results on Friday. And we sponsor a couple of those sites. And it works, because a lot of people visit the site to see what's going on. I looked back, so far, there was no problems over the Labor Day weekend. And most of the time, it's pretty squared away, pretty clear. We have a big rain. That's, you get a little spurt of E. coli once in a while. The sedimentation, this is the same slide last year. The sedimentation problem is worse this year than it was last year. In June, I took some folks on a tour from Mecklenburg and Belmont City officials up the South Fork. Ronnie was out of town. Sorry y'all couldn't join us. But, the deal is, there are problems with the South Fork. It's worsening. And we are working to get some enhanced stormwater control measures in place to at least stem the flow of this sedimentation that continually is building up over years. Not the least of which is the high-hazard silt fence. You've all seen a silt fence flop down along the side of the road. You put a wire backing behind it, they last a long time. The South Fork River, major sedimentation buildup off of Belmont. There are islands that weren't there before. Land has come down from above, from Catawba County, Lincoln County. We want to get them on a boat tour, so they can see where their land has gone. Okay? It's coming downstream. I've had residents at our Lake Wiley Marine Commission meetings last year and again this year. They can't use their docks. They can't get to the mainstream. We had to petition, I think I mentioned this last year, the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission to reposition one of their danger buoys, which was no, you couldn't get to it, because you'd run around before you got there. And some of the Paradise Cove folks had to dredge to get out. South Fork River Health Committee was recently formed, and it has an action plan that has four major areas. And that's shown here. Most important one, as far as I'm concerned, is the implement enhanced stormwater management policies. I'm chairing that subcommittee. And you can see the others, to improve water quality, manage the watershed, and increase recreational opportunities. And I want to thank Brian Skiba, Robert Kalniger, Danin Lawson, and Tucker Johnson. They're all Gaston County folks and some city Gastonia folks who are helping shape these new regulations. The deal is, we want to get this thing in place down in Gaston County with these enhanced stormwater control measures. And then, once we're, the commission has decided, okay, we're going to do these things, then we'll take up north and see if we can't get Lincoln and Catawba County to come and give us a hand with them as well. As far as education, we participated in the Catawba Water Re Water Management Group, Citizens Water Academy, different, that's from January to March. People give a little spiel about this, that, and the other. I've talked about the Lake Wiley Marine Commission for a little bit. John Serby talked about the Catawba River Keeper Group, so on. We also have a monthly newsletter in our meetings, except for December. And then, we go to the Mid-Atlantic Boat Show, Catawba River Keeper Fest, and the Garibaldi Fest in Belmont, where we hand out brochures and talk up safety. Again, we keep coming back to safety. Carbon monoxide poisoning, electrical shock, and then safe wake surfing. So, that's what we've been doing. I need your help in some of these areas. But, we want to protect, preserve, and promote Lake Wiley as a clean and, again, safe recreational waterway. I welcome your questions, your comments, and I ask for your support or recommendations on how to proceed on implementing these regulations that we think are reasonable.
Does anyone from the board have any questions for Mr. Brennan? Mr. Keeger?
Go back and tell us again, the, your conversation with the county police as far as the buffer.
When I met with, right after the boat show, I met with, I had talked to the Gaston County, I was with Mecklenburg County officers and said, "What do you think about implementing a, you know, idle speed thing like they got down in South Carolina?" And they said, "Yeah, that sounds reasonable." And right now, all they can do is say careless and reckless. If they see somebody zipping around, they can only issue them a careless and reckless. There's no standoff distance. And of course, it's a judgment call. But, there is confusion about this in Gaston County. As a matter of fact, when I first visited the website to see what the rules were here, that 50-yard rule was on the Gaston County website. I invited it to, I think, the police's attention and said, "You know, that's just for public docks." So, there's confusion. This, they're, to answer your question, they said, "Look, we can't deal with 50 yards. 50 feet is reasonable." And I followed up later on, after this wake surfing regulation came out with Captain Battle. I asked him, "Can you support that?" And his comment was, and I'll try to word this carefully, because he was very careful in his comment, he said, "We will support, we will enforce any regulations that's lawfully enacted." Okay? Well, my interpretation is, we can lawfully enact these regulations, because it says we can in the law that set us up. But, again...
But, you can enforce the 50-yard, except on a public area.
Well, right now, that's there. But, if we were to, if we were to issue these regulations, then my understanding from what Captain Battle told us, and specifically what Lieutenant, Captain Heldon from Mecklenburg said, "Yeah, we'll enforce that." If you guys promulgate, it's kind of like, if you build it, they will come.
We'll enforce what, the 50-yard?
Well, they already have to enforce the 50-yard around public docks.
Right.
This would be a 50-foot around private docks, if it's legally enacted. So, again, we have the ability to issue these regulations by the law that set us up. And the law that's set us up is the same in North Carolina and South Carolina. You read them and they're verbatim.
So, it's this body that would have to implement that?
Technically, no, sir.
Okay.
Technically, we can do it. Practically, we wouldn't do it without your blessing. Doesn't make sense for us to pull on Superman's cape, pay our bills. And again, the history is, if you're going to do something like this, you're better served to get the recommendations of the counties and see what they have to say before you go marching off down and do something that not everybody agrees with. So, I'm looking to get everybody to sing kumbaya here in this thing. I'm going to brief Mecklenburg here in a couple of weeks. So, that's where we are. I see these regulations as reasonable, as standardizing, as giving some consistency, and perhaps... some consistency, and perhaps even maybe we can get a law in all of North Carolina on the wake surfing, as they've done down there in South Carolina. Curiously, South Carolina increased the idle speed area around many lakes to 100 feet, but they did not for Lake Wylie. They kept it at 50 feet.
And that, the logic for that was that some of the narrow passages...
That's as I understand it, sir. All I know is they didn't, they didn't get it. And that's, that's where we're coming from.
Yeah. So if I understand, Mr. Brennan is looking for this board to give them...
Well, I think...
An okay to go ahead with the 50-foot.
What we'll do, this board will communicate with the manager on what he has given us tonight. We will give our concerns. She will, we'll put all those concerns with her. She will send out a synopsis to us to say, hey, these are the things that some of the board members like, they didn't like, and just, and that way we can decide. That way, he's not just shooting in the dark or whatever. I do have one thing I wanted to raise, if you're through, Mr. Keiger. One of the things that gets me about the new private dock section of that, we go back to Mary, the homeowner, calls 911 and says, hey, they're wake surfing by my dock.
Yeah.
They don't see it, so they can't enforce it. They have to be able to be there to see it, plus they have to be able to catch the people who are doing it in the act. So I think there's some things that we probably want to discuss.
Sure.
And I would like to get with the manager's recommendation, not necessarily, and this is going to be at a turn when I say this, I'd like to get the PD's perception from the people who do it every week.
Yeah.
Those people who really are there and can tell us not what's being reported to someone. I know that sounds kind of crazy, but I'd like to see that as a thing. So what I will ask, with your pleasure as well, is we give the manager some of our recommendations of what we've heard tonight, and we go from there to get a discussion, and we can send those back to you.
Yes, sir.
If that's okay with you, and that's okay with the pleasure of the board. Commissioner Worley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to thank Neil and the Lake Wylie Marine Commission for what you all do. Not a lot of thanks that you get for what you do, but I appreciate it. Certainly, the enhanced stormwater and high silt fences are something that's important. If we're not, if they're doing it in Mecklenburg County and we're not doing it here, we're contributing to a problem or causing a problem. And I was having a conversation with some of my Cramerton folks the other day. Flooding in Cramerton has gotten worse, not necessarily because of anything climate-related, but it's due to the sedimentation, and you know the area I'm talking about.
Yes, sir.
That once was a big pond, and there was room for the stormwater and the floodwaters to come down and go. Now, with all the sedimentation, there is no room, so it goes in the streets and in the fire departments and in businesses and in homes in Cramerton. So this is a problem that has metastasized over the last 40, 50 years.
Exactly.
Because when I was growing up, that problem didn't exist.
Right.
It does now.
I think you may have been on the boat when we were out there in the South Fork River, and I was pointing out how shallow it was, and dag one if a bird didn't come and land right in the middle of it and stand on one leg and look at us. That's how shallow it was. And that was an area where Ronnie used to go waterskiing years ago. So that's exactly right. If I may, sir, your point about they have to see it to be able to enforce it, I agree. That's as it is now. They have to be there to, but what, as I said, one of the other officers from Mecklenburg said, yeah, now I have another one that I could, I have another arrow in my quiver if I need it. And as a matter of fact, I just got a letter the other, timing was just really nice about this. This lady wrote for me down just upstream from the, from the new Drift Restaurant there, but still in North Carolina. She said, and she said, you know, there's a 50-yard thing about standing off my dock, but we really have these wake surfers that come by, and they're ruining my shoreline. And I said, well, ma'am, first of all, the 50 yards doesn't apply to your dock, okay? It just applies to public docks. And two, we're looking to implement a 200-foot rule, which is the Water Sports Industry Association standard, to have people stand away from your dock. She wrote back and said, thank you. That would really help a lot. So it appears that this is not an unreasonable set of, two regulations that we want to do and just try to get it standardized across the waters of Lake Wylie. But I welcome your input and look forward to receiving that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, yes, indeed.
Other than any other matters, which will come before this board at this time. Seeing, this concludes our work session for tonight. We will now start the special meeting in one, 30 seconds after this. I will now call our special meeting into order. Revision of the meeting schedule, one of the things that's happened, we want to reschedule the meeting for September the 27th in order for the board to be able to go to one of our economic development segments. And do I have a motion to approve the meeting from 6:00 PM, move to 3:00 PM on September the 27th?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Worley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. And I assume Commissioner Johnson, are you on the line? Okay. This concludes our work session for tonight. Our next regular meeting is September 27th at 3:00 PM here in the Harley B. Gassen Jr. Public Forum. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions or comments or concerns, please telephone our clerk, Donna S. Buff, at 704-866-3196. Good night, wake surfers.